Hi Dave.
Hello.
Many questions?
Yeah.
I would guess.
So the question is?
Yes.
It's a time.
It was a time to bar.
Okay, just start everybody.
Really?
And welcome to the Finance and Governance Committee. And do we have any apologies?
None that I've received, but we're missing Carol and Richard.
Okay, do we have any declarations of interest and dispensations?
No.
No. Nothing, I don't think you can do it. Regarding three public participation to receive members of the public who wish to address the meeting in respect of any item or business included in the agenda. No resolutions may be made under this item and should relate only to matters of council policy or practice, not individual affairs of the press or any other non-personal. Welcome, Richard. Do we have any members of the public on that?
No.
No.
Well.
It'll be interesting. So, point one, which was previous minutes. And. And there is a copy of the minutes. Which will be after that.
What did speak?
Item B, is it?
Yeah.
So any questions on those minutes?
Um, not questions, it's two points towards the end. After independent staffing review, the recommended, it says to note, so it's just a typo. But also when you go to the right at the end of the minutes, it says the meeting finished at.
We will have timing.
Yes, so.
I think I'm pretty sure if I remember rightly, it was, it was bang on nine o'clock.
I think it was.
Because I didn't come back in.
No, I'm pretty sure it was.
That's the rule up there.
Yeah, thank you. Apart from that, I'm happy to propose.
Awesome, proposed, and thank you, Estelle. Second, all those in favour of approving the minutes? You went to the.
What's that?
Approving the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. You abstaining as you were taking. David, are you happy with that?
Yep, he gave my thumb, yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to turn page. And are there any matters arising from the minutes? I know we have the decision action law. Which has been updated.
Just that all of these were cancelled and were. I believe we've agreed, or the arrangements are agreed, so.
Have we advertised for the cleaning person?
No, we're, so we're waiting to speak to PRS about getting our existing one converted. Because as you remember, the resolution was thirty hours between the both of them, so we need to find out what per hours are. And then we can advertise for the additional amount that, as I spoke of, then we started the ball rolling, wanted to. There was, there was one other thing, a query was asked regarding a smart meter on British Gas. That I believe has now been done. And I think it finally fitted for me.
I can't feel, sorry, could you tell me where we are?
So. There was a thing about a smart meter on the, on the minutes. And I was just updating the fact that it's in progress or it has been done.
Oh, thank you.
And Carol has joined.
Welcome, Carol.
Hi everybody, sorry, I was having a bit of a problem to get in, thank you.
Long as you're with us now. Okay, item five, financial map. So we have the accounts. The appendix C is the actual cash and bank totals. And then Richard has provided us with the summary of the accounts and his report, which I believe says we're on track, Richard.
Yeah, I'm down to any questions, but as you can see from the cash and back totals, you're, you know, thirty thousand higher than you were this time last year, which gives you some indication of better cash flow. And in terms of where we are with spending, we're around sixty one percent. Considering a lot of that, a lot of the spends are wallet items that we spent at the beginning of the year, so for insurance, insurance is a big chunk of our budget, it's already been spent, so we think we're on track.
And are we, this is not about what you've given us, looking at the next month, though, looking at November. Are we expecting it to drop as it has done in the previous two years?
Uh, no.
No, right.
So definitely not to that amount. No, definitely not.
I mean, I've sort of not been aware of this plummet until we've seen it like this.
I, I didn't even notice. There is a hundred and ten thousand savings and there is thirty two thousand in the current account. And that takes into account the payments you approved at Saturday, which was about three thousand pounds worth, plus salaries. And so, and of course, the preset next is due in December, so we're, we're okay, I think.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't foresee that big drop of that by that.
And I've got some queries on, well, points on appendix D. Uh, two point two, I think you.
Yes, it should say October.
Yes, and there's, and the same thing later on.
Yes, it should.
It's, yes, right, thank you.
I.
That's fine.
And indeed the thirties.
Yes, yes, but I. I did.
Yes.
That is the first.
There's no such thing as the first is right September, isn't there?
Yes, but it's.
Yes, the first September day, yes, yeah, yeah.
I didn't even notice until I'd read it. But yeah, so through the reports, that's how, one of some of the big spend that was done in October. And as you can see, it's mainly related to staffing, we had a big chunk of Owen's coaches as well. And we also had a deposit on the tipper lease, which is quite a big chunk of payment. But other than that, income was relatively good and we also had our back return back, which was sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand. So it means our cash flow is relatively good. And we also had a second instalment of our grant for the TIC solar project, which is eleven thousand eight hundred. And we had the grant for the community fridge, which is two thousand five hundred. And we've also had the twenty thousand pounds grant from Palace for the Maesad Ray play equipment, so that's helped that cash flow again, so. They seem to be sending us lots of money before we finish the work, which is, which is unusual, but some good fronts.
But you've bought the fridges, haven't you?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Down.
Yeah, the spending on the community fridge is, is in hand, ready for the budget. I'm talking about the playbank, for example, that's quite a nice chunk, but it doesn't mean you have to.
If my memory serves me right, then this time last year.
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry.
Yes, thanks, Morak. And can, can I just ask what the significance of the crime and disorder act is to? This, I mean, I, I know that it's non-applicable, but in, in what circumstances does it become applicable?
Section five of the Crime and Disorder Act nineteen ninety eight places a statutory duty on all ten councils, our parish councils in England. To have regard to crime and disorder in its area when carrying out any function of the council, any decision.
I'd have regard to it if we ever got any information from the police about crime and disorder.
Indeed, and as, as you know, being copied into the email between me and the, the police, trying to get them to come and speak to us has been incredibly difficult, but yeah, so. In, in terms, we're basically required by law to have regard to it, hence why it now forms a payment. Even though you'll, you'll know that every single paperwork I've done so far just says NA next to it.
And unless it was the white ribbon event, which obviously.
Would be positive.
On the count of disorder, yes. Okay, so we're asked to note. The current accounts, where up until the end of last.
Yes, as in, yeah.
Okay, five point two is the payment of invoices. I'm just wondering, do you have any questions on the act of attention sound?
Oh, it's just, yeah, appendix E, John.
Yeah.
Um, just charity donations, is that the windfall?
No, charity donations is the money raised from Estelle's book sale.
It's down as an income.
Yes, because we banked it, so we banked the cash we've received.
As, as a charitable, right.
A charitable donation.
Charitable.
And it will go out then under section one three seven on the account, so something goes out very well.
Thank you.
And you'll note actually that it was actually raised was six five four pounds, but it was topped up by fifty, which is the fifty pound bank in October to make seven hundred and four pounds, so the seventy four pounds is the, the total amount. And in terms of the other donations, ninety nine, that is the warm hub income. It's because now the warm hub is a cashbook itself.
Yeah.
And I have to now account for that somewhere in our nominal ledger, so that's why it comes in donations, but then of course in. It should have come out under warm hub donations, but it came out of donation, but that's, yeah, I just need to move it in, that's the reason.
And could I ask about operations and development, line one one two zero, which is the telephone mast?
Yes.
When do we actually get this money?
And we receive it from memory in, in one chunk. And it's around about this time of the year, so I'll, I will go back and see when we had it last year and, and claim it.
Okay. We did receive them last week.
Yes, we did. I think we actually received last year, we received last year's and the year before, I think, they're up to date now. And of course, the income grant there is the community fridge. At one through seven zero.
Yeah, we just checked that we actually invoiced it.
Yeah, we, we haven't invoiced it, but I need to see what date we do invoice it. And for example, this is exactly the same on recreation, one three four zero, rep club rents. Remember last month I said we haven't invoiced them yet? I have now invoiced some of them, because I know, and that's why it's now showing as, as you're today.
And the other question was about the country park lease. It's. We budgeted four hundred.
Yeah.
I understand it's five hundred, but it seems to have paid them five hundred and thirty.
Ah, right, so I will, okay, that's a budgeting error on our part, so you only budgeted four hundred.
Yes.
Now, the lease itself to the landowner is five hundred pounds a year.
Right.
We also paid thirty pounds a year licence fee to Paris County Council for access from the flash.
Oh, right, thank you.
So that's where the five hundred and thirty is made up.
Yeah.
Next's budget, the budget is the five hundred. The primary amount.
Any other questions about the cash flow?
Just, this is probably something quite simple that I'm just not understanding, but the, I've just pondered over four six six two train ticket costs for the T I S U. As to why that is nil at the moment, but.
So I can't hear you just saying.
Yeah, so why that is nil at the moment, but the budget figure is five thousand. Is that sort of going in one lump at some point in the year?
No, and this is why next year's budget doesn't have it in.
Oh, and.
So the council has budgeted five thousand pounds the past couple of years and last year we spent six hundred and ten. And it's the paper, you have ticket printing. And so I'm not expecting to spend five thousand pounds, so, so next year's budget does not have five thousand pounds in, I think that's an easy saving to be made.
If we were spending five thousand pounds on ticket paper.
Yeah. No, in terms of the train ticket, that's the one of the ones for us that we don't have any outgoing cost, as in we only receive back for the commission each month, and you can see that under rail ticket income five.
Yeah.
Five one five oh one.
Um. Uh. Anne Holloway Centre, one six three five, the income from the lease, we still.
You tell me which page we're on, Carol, because I can't hear a thing at four.
Sorry, it's Anne Holloway Centre and it's item one six three five. Um, income on the lease.
Yeah, this is the lease that Paris Teaching Health Board.
Yes.
Needs to be invoiced for, I don't.
They haven't been invoiced.
And I don't know what date they should have been, as you'll remember, hopefully you will, their lease actually expired in twenty twenty.
I think that's the next to last page in.
And it's been held over ever since, and it starts in June, so it might be that we've missed.
So we need to charge them for more than one year.
No, we've had it last year, we just need to make sure that we, we do it, and we will before the end of the year.
Yeah, yes, and.
Income other rooms on Anne Holloway Centre, is there more, Haven Centre?
Yes. It's just, it seemed particularly unfair that this small charity is paying regularly and the other one isn't, but I understand why now. Yes, and the other thing is, just to confirm, I am correct in understanding that the income from the fireworks display. Only goes up to the end of October and therefore does not include any of the income. That we know we made, so things are going to look very different next.
Correct, so income five, they will have an additional, was it two thousand three hundred?
Is it?
I can't remember from my head, but when you look at this next month.
Good, right, thank you.
And just to say, that income that had been backed already is what we take in stores, is stores to be there. And this year we actually increased the prices because they were wonderfully low compared to what other people are charging, and what commercial companies accept us to charge, so that's why we've made far more.
Thank you.
Sorry, Phil.
Can I just ask, it would help me, well, for other people, but it would help you. If instead of at the bottom of the page having continued on next page, if the pages had a number and we could revert them.
If instead of at the bottom of the page having continued on next page, if the pages had a number and we could revert them.
They're at the top, they're at the top right.
What's the next page, you've got to do with it then?
I, I don't, I, I don't set the format of this, this is.
Unfortunately, my printer cut the top off, or put on razor on it, on every page.
Yeah.
I hadn't even got West Hotel and Council on it.
Okay, so yeah, so, um, this is what I get from realtors, so I can't change the.
But it is in the, um. Okay, so that was to, do we have to approve that? No, it's to notice now.
Yes, it was, it was approved, it's.
So moving on to appendix F. Richard, and you've got the, the updated run. Is there any significant additions to?
Significant additions, um, yes, it went from forty-one thousand to eighty-three thousand, um, includes all salaries and, uh, and things that were missing off. Basically, when the agenda was issued, um, because I was here last week, um, lots more invoices came in since then, so I'm happy to go through it. You want to compare, but, um, it's things like, um, our Christmas light electrical testing, six hundred pounds.
Yeah.
Uh, an additional one for, um, blix and sticks, um, British Gas, uh, yeah, Anne Holloway Centre, British Gas, eight hundred pounds, so yeah, it's, it's added up.
Any questions about the invoices for approval? It always amazes me how much we're paying on lift maintenance.
Um, we are required under our insurance to have them serviced every quarter. And, and that's what you see before you is the quarterly bill that comes, um, this is Otis, isn't it?
Right, happy to propose them.
Would you like to propose that we have a payment of invoices, thank you Alison, so a second for that, thank you Bill. All those in payment, in favour.
Hands up.
Of course, this will go to full council for approval next week, so.
Everybody abstaining? Was that everybody? Yes, I do, please.
Talking of fireworks, I think there's some fireworks going on.
It'd be every night this week, it drives, drives my dog up the wall.
We're, we're a long way away from the fifth of November.
I know. Breakfast in four.
Okay, scrutiny payments, um, so in September and October, so, yeah, can I say our revenue?
Yes, uh, I, I did the, the one for September, I picked items entirely at random. The invoices were duly produced and tallied with the entries.
And Estelle?
I did the October ones and I was spot on, no complaints.
And we keep a record of this.
Yes, and, well, the minutes of the record, but, um, Estelle did also the bank reconciliation quarterly as per the financial regulations and hers checked assigned, because that we have to keep that, so I pop ahead of them.
I think they can throw it on board, that's great.
And do they get reported to audit committee, Sean?
Um, we can do, they haven't been in the past, because we've done it, but, um, Morgan happy to report them wherever.
Yeah, even if it's just for information, you know, I think that would be good.
I've, um, talking of audit, I've chased audit rounds again, um, to find out when our three, when our three audits ending, um. Um, because of course I need to tell audit committee what's happening with our audits, and, um, I don't really want to call an audit committee meeting until I've got something to tell you. The last thing I had back was, it's, it's been finalized, it's in review.
Um. Sorry, Alison. Richard, when you are communicating with Audit Wales, can you remember the fact that they have now admitted that despite they are three years behind, the work that they have done in either this year or the previous year is charged at that rate? So we need to go through their bills and knock it off, because if we've given them everything on time and they're now doing a review, that is not.
Yeah, and we've, we've never had a bill from them, yeah.
No, but we will get one, it will be enormous, and it must be enormous, because they're charging us at a much higher rate than.
It would have been too.
Well, I mean, you know, public sector pay increase last year was what, five percent?
Three point.
Was it that, and then what about the year before?
No, public sector pay increase last year was, well, local government paid, separate amount was one thousand two hundred and ninety.
Was it, right, well, whatever these are, we're paying the extra, and I think we've got to, uh.
Well, you're paying more than that, because, um, audit wells are civil servants, so. Yeah, and I think unfortunately, um, the public whales, uh, public audit whales act allows them to charge for a year, they did the actual.
It is, yes, that it does, but I think we should argue, and I think we should give them what we should give them and then continue to argue until they wring it out of us if, if we haven't won the argument.
Yes. I have to say, in England, the situation is better because they have private firms doing the work. Um, however, the, the thing in England is, because they're private firms, they, they don't understand local government, so they get lots of fashions wrong and things. Um, whereas at least we have sector-specific orders going on, but it's just incredibly slow.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's frustrating because I know that councils close to us have had theirs back for this year, and we're still waiting for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and of course, twenty-four.
Well, we live in hope, don't we, Alison?
I think, I think One Voice Wales will help us with that argument, though, they are pushing it.
Okay, um.
Just to say for scrutiny payment, so I think it's, I think it's council France in December.
No, it's me.
Oh, yes, you, December, and we need someone for January, but we can.
Can't be me, can't it, because I'm chair of audit.
No, true, so we need somebody who is not on this committee as well, because sometimes we have.
So when's the next quarter, uh, December, it'll need to be somebody who isn't a bank secretary, um, for January.
Estelle?
I'm quite happy to do it again. As long as you remind me.
Yeah, of course, no, it's not.
So Estelle, if you would like to do January?
Yeah.
And did you, did, did I see your hand up to volunteer, Bill?
Um, I'm.
No, no, you're doing, you're doing November. You're doing November and December.
Sorry, I'm doing it in January.
I need someone for, I need someone for December in January, and then Estelle will do January and February, is that make sense? We're always on a line for maximum consideration.
I'll do one of them.
Okay, fine, unless, whoever, because you're doing November in December.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, well.
Who does the next one after Morag, and I'll do the next one after Phil.
Fine.
Yep.
That sounds, that sounds all right.
And then if you.
When you say it has to be somebody who's not a bank signature, you mean that they should, if they do do it, they shouldn't sign the, of the.
No, no, it said the financial regulations require that the quarterly one done by someone who's not a bank. Yes, the only quarterly ones.
All right, okay.
The, the ones in between are fine, it's the quarterly ones that happen to be in the.
Could I clarify? I was under the impression I'm not supposed to do it because I'm chair of audit committee, is that right?
There's no, there's no pre-admission on.
All right, okay.
But you.
But not.
Good practice would be not to, because it'll get reported back.
Yes, exactly, yeah, yeah. Is there enough volunteers?
Yeah, and, you know, we do, there's, there's fifteen of you somewhere, I'm sure we can recruit you all to fifteen at one point.
There's only twelve.
Months in a year, that's, one a year.
Okay, thank you. My partner is the ISP action plan, which is appendix G. I stopped to make the, the tables on it. You want to take us through that?
Yeah, just so we're still, we're still looking at FS one, just to give you an update, and I won't say too much because we're on confidential session, but, um, the, another interested third party, um, wanted to buy it from us for a nominal sum and was told that they need to, um, wait for the auction like everybody else. And I think we can all work out through what I'm saying about that one. Um, benchmarking efficiency costs against other towns, um, that work has, has started and the review is finished, um. I found a, a, a town council that does the same band deer footland, two hundred and seventy-nine pounds a year, uh, which is Embry and Bury Fort, and they also do Meals on Wheels, so, um, I'm keeping a close eye on them, because it's. Quite high, because of course our band D is particularly high compared to our, compared to that basis, rather than other places. Um, but, uh, so that's quite positive. Um, staffing review, of course, has now been finalized in the consultation, ended on Monday. I'll talk more about that in staffing update later. Um, three-year budget, um, you will consider that in January, so, um, it's basically the, the next year's budget and then this percentage increases into the two years, to give you some more of a three-year financial planning. Um, the CO2, um, continued broadcasting meetings and new democracy platform, that is all done, and we issued a press release, um, last week, um, unfortunately, the press hasn't looked up yet, or not published yet, but then we have on our own, have everything. Hopefully they will, uh, because it hopefully reinforces back to the public that we are, um, being very transparent. Um, newsletter, um, that work is done, um, addition one went out, it was well received. Um, we did have one, someone told me that they had it three times, which gives you the some reliability of mail. Um, I know, Richard, you, you did have your copy, um, but if anyone else here did have a copy, please let me know, that's, that's good. Um, have you had, did you have your copy? Not in the post, or in mail? Um, the difficulty is for us is, um, we have to give it a certain number of weeks before we can like challenge, because it might be stuck in the system. Um, however, I did know that, um, Shrewsbury is doing exactly the same exercise to all thirty-nine thousand houses in Shrewsbury, and it's costing them five thousand pounds, um, whereas ours cost us two hundred, so, um, well, yeah. But again, this work was supposed to be a trial, looking at how reliable one of ours was, so I'll report back, um, in January. Um, and then, yeah, the, the rest are not started to join year two or, um, others.
Chair, just on the newsletter, would it be worth putting an email out to all of the councillors, asking them if they've received it? And maybe wider to other people as well, because if Estelle hasn't had it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there may well be others.
Yeah, of course. Then the next one will be, um, we put it on social media and say, did you have it? And do a poll, and we can see then what type of response rate it was. Um, frustrating, because of course we, we've got a contract with them, we pay for it to be delivered, um, but of course just wait until that period ends, and we're going to then, then challenge it.
I think what, what, what can happen with, with, with things that they're delivering in this phase, if they haven't actually got any other posts for a house, they don't put anything through the door.
Yeah, and I think that was the case of the person who had it three times, and they'd had no post, and then they'd had posts, and then they, no, no person, yeah, that type of thing.
Can I just say I didn't receive one either?
No, thank you, Carol.
Alison, um, I, I wonder whether when you do put something out about that, if it would be worth explaining why that we have paid for this service and we need to assess whether it has worked. Um, people are more likely to respond, just if they think you're interested. Um, the other thing, because it's their money, but the other thing is, I wonder whether on this, which is really useful, um, you use the words in progress, whereas some of them are ongoing, like the newsletter.
Yes.
So you've done it, it was in progress, it's now ongoing, and I wonder whether it might be useful to do that. And I can see you've got some rag rating there, I wonder whether, you know, the, uh, the amber might be useful for those ongoing things, it's just a suggestion.
And the rag rating at the moment is green for completed, and red for delayed, and grey for not started, so happily add in the yellow for.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's really about, we've got quite a few things that once you've got going, they are going to be ongoing, aren't they? Yeah.
And just to say, if ever you need someone to visit Pendry and Bury Fort, I'm happy to, to do a visit to my brothers in, absolutely, so, some chemistry, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, I'm watching their budget closely, as a comparison, so they don't, they don't publish their papers like we do.
Oh. Okay, any other questions about the strategy and the update?
Um, it's not, um, the sort of question about the strategy, but the volunteer strategy, I wonder whether it may be worth contacting W C V A to get their volunteer policy. And, um, of course, One Voice Wales may well be able to put you towards some volunteer strategies. But W C V A have standard ones that you can just have and you can stick on the wall wherever as well.
That's fine, and, um, that, that, the reason that's not started is because, of course, the person who will be doing that is not simply post the.
Hasn't started, yes.
Okay, item five point five, which is, um, next year's budget. Um, Richard has got some spare copies.
Yeah, I sent this round on, um, if you didn't have it, I'll happily give you, basically, it should have been, it should have been in the pack, but, um, it was missed out. I'll have to use your copy now.
These do have numbers at the top corner of the pages. So do you want to go through what changes you've made since last year?
Yeah, so if you will remember, there is a report, and that does set out some of the changes, so basically, um, in October, council instructed all the committees to look at its budget again, where savings can be achieved. And I don't, having reviewed what happened at events and to a planning, they didn't do that. And I don't believe Ops and Development did last week either, and which isn't great, um. So, again, you'll, you'll kind of have to do it for them on their behalf. Um, well, I'm not getting the opportunity again in draft three, which is, um, in January. Uh, but in terms of the changes, so, um, across the board, um, draft one had applied a five percent pay uplift. Um, however, national increases, um, indicate that it'd be more likely to four percent. So I've dropped the pay increases to four percent in draft two, which does save, um, I'm not sure, so, tough accounting, good. Um, staffing reallocation, so draft two reflect the decisions made to employ those two cleaners in house. So of course, uh, reduces the cleaning materials budget from, um, thirty pounds in draft one to then the required, um, twenty-one pounds in draft two, that's already a ten thousand pounds saving. Um, and I've also, um, jiggled around the community services manager's salary as well, that gets me on the wheels um, to reflect what's operationally done in the same way that we do with the markets manager. Again, it's, there's no changes, it's just where we count for the costs, so you can see the shoe cost of the service. Um, market testing has now been completed for most of the utilities, particularly T I C, um, and water. Um, however, some tangible work still needs to be done, um, because those contracts are going live in October next year, so they're back in draft group. And the hygiene contract was previously in draft one, um, was nine thousand in tambo and nine thousand in public toilets. However, it is just nine thousand overall, so I've split that down to four thousand five hundred in each cost centre, which again, now is at nine thousand pounds seven in draft one. Um, tambo and repairs, uh, repairs made them reduce down slightly, um, clean materials then reduced due to the move to the enhanced cleaners. Uh, vehicles, I've now gone through all of our leases and what we should actually be paying for them and budgeted for that um, by itself, so now the, all the vehicle count codes accurately reflect the current lease arrangements we have. And I've re-looked at all of the income, um, and increased them where the current projection says that we're doing well for this year. So for example, I revised down the corn store, uh, corn, corn store, call it exchange income, however, the projections in the current year indicate that we will, um, meet the same level as, as the current year, so I've put that back up to a current year. And when I, when the draft form was done, it was like, we were going to miss this, I'll give that, and that's come back up again. So, and we've, um, I've got the Meals on Wheels income as well, looking at the volumes of sales, open spaces income, um, from sports clubs to actually reflect what's in the leases, not just what we've written down for the past five years, that we've been pushing wrong the last, that past couple of years. Uh, and also look at the market incomes on. Um, I'm adding a new legal fees account code, because there are going to be some legal costs, um, incurred on the leases we're doing with, um, the day extension, things like that. Um, of course, there's nowhere to put them at the moment. I, um, after Richard's helpful comment at the last finance committee, when he asked about I T, and it's that all, I thought, I better check, and good job I did, because, um, we were budgeting, we, we currently have fifteen thousand pounds in budget this year, I just spent ten. However, I recalculated, it was eighteen, um, so it was a good job we checked. So basically, what I've done is I've created a new cost centre called I T, and I've now included individual lines for photocopyer lease or telephones, for equipment, for, um, things for broadband, so you can actually see, it's not just being locked in one code, you can actually see where the costs are being spent in terms of I T, bank interest, I've increased, um. Bank interest, I've increased five hundred, seven hundred and fifty, just because we seem to be more tending that at the moment. And T I C budget, I think I've split out the T I C agency fees into its own cost centres, so we can accurately see what the difference is there. And actually, it would reflect at the moment, the better agency split than I budgeted for. So I've increased the budget on that one slightly, because of course, the more we increase the budget, the less preset we have to raise, because of course, income versus adventure is. Yeah, and I've also added in a new line for the place plan, which I know is something the events committee wanted to. Wanted to look at, so that's that's draft two at the moment, but of course, draft three will will come and be refunded further. Just so you're all aware as well, Powers yesterday approved the council tax basis for the coming current year. Barnstable is incredibly lucky, because the last few years has been going down, but actually we've got a zero point eight percent increase in our cash tax base. For the next year, which means any preset values will be offset by zero point eight percent. That's a whistle stop tool, but I'm happy to do any line individually, and I I would suggest that you do go line by line in the budget.
Thanks, Maureen. Yeah, we we're budgeting five hundred pounds annually for Welsh language. We used nothing last year, we've used nothing this year. Now, is that intended for things like translation costs and stuff? Or should, could it be used for things like promoting the Welsh language as a?
Because we haven't used it. However, I would go to suggest that we probably earmark this year and move it into next year. As in, not to re-raise the money, but to move the money we've already raised in this year. But again, I don't know what it's for, because we haven't spent it for the last couple of years, so I'm a lost, a lost friend.
What it's for is for translation.
Okay.
But we haven't used it because Gareth does it for us. So we don't need it, you know, so at the moment.
There's there's no, there's no point in raising money from the from the electorate.
And and remember that when we come on to the town hall transformation, that will include promotion of the Welsh language and all that within it. Two questions, this is within our finance and governance section. We've got marketing and we've got thousand pounds and I'm, I've been puzzling as to what marketing we. In finance and governance.
It's because it's down as administration, you know. So basically, it's marketing of the councillor's hold.
Right.
And not marketing of individual events or.
Right, and what about special projects? Again, is that?
The special project is a reminder for me, because I don't like the ambiguity of the line. It doesn't give me the confidence that I know it's for. I I suspect, and I'm sure I'll be corrected by the people who've been here longer, it's been used as sort of an in-year reserve previously.
Yes.
But that's not the correct way of doing it.
We we kept it in last year because the T I C. We weren't sure how much we were going to have to contribute to that, so we didn't leave it in there. But somewhere within this budget, we need a small contingency amount that.
Yeah, well, that would be it. For example, special projects this year has been used for the newsletter. Something that came up during the year that we wanted to move some money from, and we've moved. And actually, no, special project, sorry, wasn't used in the newsletter, I used staff salaries for that one, special projects was used for free parking. Has been moved from that ten thousand pounds to do those four days.
So it's it's not a huge amount. It's on the on the basis that someone's going to, something's going to happen in the year. And I don't mean major works or things like that, but things that we really want to do, but there isn't the money to do it. And so that that is, I would suggest we keep it in, whether it's all the right thing.
It sounds like a contingency fund to me.
That's fine, I'm more than happy to amend.
But I don't mind it, I I think special projects is quite good, because when you've got contingency, everybody seems. Seem to think they can dip into that, whereas if it's special projects, it's got to be a special project, it's over the market. The car parking. Is a special project, it's not, it's not the people budgeting, oh, well, you think a bit of that, you think a bit of that.
Just just while we're going through line by line, you'll notice insurance hasn't hasn't changed. I'm supposed to meet our insurers tomorrow, however, we've just moved our meeting to January, because they'll have more of an idea of what that premium will be. However, we do know that our insurance at the moment is overinflated. As in, we, I'm expecting that figure to come down. So I haven't changed it, because I think it's all recruited to budget, send it out, but it's come down. Also, unfortunate for us, and I thought, hang on, I'm using my knowledge of rates particularly well, and increasing the rates by the multiplier and. Okay, well, C P I is going to be for the government, relates to the multiplier. I think we've got, we've got a revaluation year coming up in April. So our rates are being revalued across across England and Wales. In particular, we will know what our rates will be in December. So once I know what they are, then I can accrue a budget for what our rate going to be. However, I will note that last time a revaluation happened, for example, this building went from a rateable value of fifty three thousand to sixty three thousand. And wasn't challenged. If I was you, I would challenge any increases in rateable value. Because it doesn't cost us or make us have any time at all, having been the other side of it.
Yes.
It does put an error on the view of way to relook in exactly exactly what we've got.
So is the the overcost of our insurance due to overinflated value of our buildings, et cetera?
I think so, yeah. And our insurers have broken down into three and four contingent parts. Twenty five thousand is roughly on buildings, we have a cyber insurance of about eighteen hundred. Vehicles insurance of of six thousandish and then the remaining amount is like construction and. And of course, that includes public liability and employees' liability insurance as well. I do need to check as I know that we do have fidelity insurance, particularly important for us to have. We should have it, because if anything was ever to go wrong with our finances. If, heaven forbid, one of our employees ran off with some money, fidelity insurance then would cover us for that, so we need to make sure we've got that. That's always, each of the waters always pick up on. I'm hopeful that that building can can go down. Having done the revaluations that we've had on some of the buildings, you know, transforming day center, et cetera, they're at the moment, their values are particularly high.
So, can I just say, the two big things for me is is. It really is disappointing that operations committee didn't, I know you were absolutely.
Yeah, Phil and Stella both were.
Sorry, I said, I'm disappointed that the operations committee at the time didn't look at the budget, but can I? You've told me that you've sat down with the operations team.
Yes.
And have gone through it.
Yeah, yeah, and so so the first time ever this year, the staff were involved in the budget. We all sat together around a table and went through line by line and said, what do we think, what was our priorities for next year? We looked at the interim plan, worked out exactly what we'd be spending. So they've, you know, we've all had a good look, good look at it, but committees should own their budget. And if you remember, I sent you an email after the events committee. I don't like the idea of doing these behind closed doors changes to the budget, I think it should be done in public session in the committee. And, you know, if if a committee's saying they want more money, then I'm hoping that they will say, what for? We can't just have money for the sake of it, you need to justify what particular project you want to spend that money on. You know, the strategic plan now has identified what projects we're supposed to be doing for the next three years. So that really does guide the budget now, because of course, previously the budget was driving the work. I say we've got a plan driving the budget, which drives the work, which is a much better way around than doing it. So we've budgeted for a plan, but if any committee does need extra, then now it's time to identify it before we get to the to the final. Because we need to submit our preset by the thirtieth of January, council's meeting on the twenty eighth of January to finalise the preset. So we've only got January left, with a lot meeting in December, just for council.
I think to be fair, I mean, I I didn't attend the ops committee last week and. So many members were absent for good and necessary reasons. And in fact, all the members of the committee were online, a lot of the people here in the chamber were members of the committee. So it was actually very difficult to do anything.
But I, as I said in the email, I'm happy to have the conversations with the chairs of the committees. If to go through it line by line, and then we can report back for changes in in public session and all happens to happen in December.
And I was very clear with the events committee that if they, it's all very good to say we want more money. But they need to say what they want to spend it on, because there are some lines in the events committee budget which are flexible. So community events is flexible, they can spend it on different things. And but my recollection is that not very long ago. For this year's budget, it was very much let, because of all the other pressures of the council. It's let's do the events that we know we do well and that people like and concentrate on those. We have tried to expand this year, so we've taken in ideas at the events committee. And I know both Bill and Phil have come up with events they may like to put on. But you said that they wouldn't probably come into place until twenty twenty seven, so. But but if you do think you want to do something in twenty twenty six, so next year, you need to do. You know, you need to bid for that money, so we can put it in the budget now, but it needs to be specific on what we want. Because to ask Welshful taxpayers to pay more money through the preset. On something that's, that they can't put their finger on, it's very difficult to do. So we've got very little time to do that, but we will speak to Chris, won't we? And obviously, I'm I'm more comfortable with Ops Committee, because they have had. Richard's had that conversation with the team, so they've had a lot of input into the budget. And then it will come back again in December, but we are meeting in December, aren't we?
Yes, a full council's meeting on the tenth of December. So that, the full council will look at the budget again, like in a draft three, and then the committees will look at a draft four, to affect the final draft in January.
I wonder whether you could just explain the, what goes under the various settings? Yes, that's insurance, then we've got audit, you understand what that is, then we've got professional fees, and then we've got legal fees. So what are the professional fees?
Off the top of my head, I'm honestly not sure. But this year's professional fees, for example, includes the money that was used. As part of the staffing thing that we had.
To me, it seems another one a bit like it's special projects if we're not careful, you know, we seem to have the others and I. It's fine to have it, but do we need it?
But in in the past, it has covered building survey.
Yes, it has, yes, it has.
It's covered a range of things.
Yes, it has. I mean, that's, but now we've got a strategic plan. We should, we should have a better understanding of what it is we're likely to need, that's, that's my point. We've, you know, we're in a far better position than we've been in since I've been on this council. So, you know, it's very different.
Yeah, I I I think it just covers any time that we need. External or third party advice, whether that be accounting advice, surveyors. Building assessment. Yeah, H R, it's it's all that sort of external stuff.
So I'm looking at what this is, so if you if you see on the screen, I'm pointing to those on Zoom, but so we have a pensions investment contract. So we have, as part of our pension, we have a third party to just the staff work. And we've got payroll. So we've got quarter one, quarter two, then we've got the. Then we've got the money that we did to get the C C J. Then we've got payroll again. And then the one after that then is the staffing review, which money was fired from staff salaries to to top up that budget. So that that's basically what we've come to. So that's why it's gone back to two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that's fine.
The town hall consultants.
I thought, I didn't know whether it was the right kind of some or not, if you didn't know what it did, thank you.
Richard, are you onto a handle?
Are we, are we doing a page at a time?
Well, I'm getting to that, because I've got pages at a time.
I mean, I I've got a question on page five, which is under Ops. Which is in relation to waste collection. Why we've buttered in for an extra thousand pounds for that next year? I see the actual year to date is higher.
Yeah, so 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 that is town hall. Now, waste collection for the town hall consists currently of our trade waste licence with Paris, which is carworn and glass. However, we do know that we have a legal duty to expand that to all other types of recycling. And as you can also see here, we're spending higher in the year than we did. So the increase includes an additional amount to cover that, but also to cover extra items of recycling, like food waste that we cooked back from. From the hub, and yeah, so that's that, it's expanding the service to cover our legal duties on workplace recycling.
Okay, thank you. Does that include the the market?
Yes.
So is is there, should should we be thinking about a reciprocal increase in the market traders' fees?
Potentially, you've just set the fees for the next year and we didn't keep any increase. I think the idea was we wouldn't set an increase until the town hall transformation work had been done, but I I'd get the money. It's all, it's all town hall, so also any event that's happening here that has waste also falls under that. But of course, it doesn't really get picked up in any other budget, because of course, it comes under the income for the town hall instead.
Well, I know in particular, there's a lot of waste associated with the. The 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 food festival event.
Yeah, yeah.
Would that be included in this?
Yeah, I moved on to the next page, page six. And just looking at the town centre.
Which which page are you?
I was looking at the town centre amounts you budgeted, two thousand five hundred for planting, is that planting in the existing areas that we have or is that?
No, this is part of, this is part of the ISP project TC one, which is about beautifying the town centre in terms of planting trees. So this includes for planters and for trees themselves in the town centres. Which was part of the strategic plan, that's why it's got TC one.
I wonder on that point, Richard, whether it would be worth us meeting with Louise Tambini, who keeps us tidy. Before we finalise this budget, because she was very much saying we could work together on getting grants and things. So if we could do that, we might be able to eliminate those items, or at least reduce them quite a lot.
Yes, right. So basically, at the moment, I I thought that budget would be exceeding. I thought that was a that was a low, but actually, the research we've done actually is that planters actually don't cost that much for self-orchestrating planters. And of course, we've got the local garden centres for trees, et cetera.
Yeah, adding to what Alison said, we should also perhaps discuss it with. I can't remember his name, but the High Streets Development Officer that took over from Phil Jones. Because I was told that there was possibly money available to help with these planting schemes.
Yeah, and I I think there was, and unfortunately for us, I think it's transforming towns money, which of course, we're trying to use for the town hall project. So it's like, what grant do we want to use? Does that make sense?
It does, I wasn't sure whether it was a separate thing. I did meet him once, and he was going to come back to me and never did, okay.
I remember when those posters were announced, and there was like, there were seven of these new people, and it was a press release from out, and it was announced that I haven't really seen them since.
I don't think there's so many of them now, I think there's lots fewer.
Can I suggest? Going back to page five, right at the bottom, fundraiser of leak consulting. Is this the actual physical person fundraiser that we employed about three years ago?
Yeah, so so this line was used for the town hall transformation consultants. So accompanying resources for change. So so what's happened is, is in the previous financial year, you budgeted five thousand and you spent five thousand. Now, in the current year, for some reason, a budget was not applied, even though the same work will happen, so some sort of item will have to be done when we get the bill for that. However, in next year's budget, you'll see that that line has moved on to page six, and it's under town hall transformation instead. So I've tidied it up, put it in a different place, because it relates to the transformation opposed to the lines.
Right, so what's happened to the actual physical person to whom we employed as a fundraiser? Who, when I asked the question a good three years ago, had only done one thing for us?
I don't know about a specific person, I thought we contracted a company. I don't know about a specific person. I, I thought we contracted a company. Um, I, I looked at the councillors here that were involved.
Well, it was a specific person, a woman, and she did, excuse my French, she did down all for us. Was being paid, and this was about three years ago. I don't know. Sorry, Alison.
Um, but I think the person that we need to contact in Paris, it would be Sam Lloyd Clayton, who was over these, this man.
Yeah. Um, I, I don't know about that person in the past, but this money is specifically for the people who are working on the town halls. And the refurbishment project. So, I, I don't know about.
Would you like me to clarify that?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, no, we've never employed a woman. Um, we, uh, we contracted Resources for Change. And there was a budget put aside that was, I believe, twenty-five thousand when Steve Kay was there. Uh, so that's a very long time ago. That's back in two thousand and nineteen. And that money has been used a little bit at a time. And um Resources for Change were appointed um to do the feasibility study. They did the work, which we've all had the report and everything on this, and they're now doing the next stage, which is now working towards getting the application in for the development phase. And it's the same company doing it.
So, I'm sorry, this is for the Town Club. Richard, can I come and see you about this?
Of course, can.
Thank you. You happy with that?
Yes, of course. I'm just trying to find actually, um, in the, in the previous years, what, what that, um, that code was spent on. Um, I can't seem to find where it was spent in the. Yeah, it doesn't seem to be spent in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, so I can't see back and see what was spent in it. But um, come and see me, I can find out.
Okay. Um, I've got some questions. Some of it has already been answered, it now gets to the first question, but they're with me. Number three. And things I mean, so look at one thing and then think, oh, why isn't that in this room?
Yeah, it's big.
Day.
No, they've disappeared.
No, no, they've been answered for. Um, yeah, there's, there's one for me, which is on page five, the community fridge.
Yes.
And you've got two, and it's only two hundred and fifty pounds. Yeah, I thought that was an independent project that wasn't going to cost us any money.
There will be some ongoing costs associated with the project. Um, I didn't know what to put in, so I just put two fifty, but there will be food, there will be um annual food hygiene testing. There'd be, you know, the sign-off by Environment and Health.
Right.
Um, and it was not known what to put against it, but um.
Yeah, I, I just.
Yeah, I, 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 when, when council accepted the project, they accepted the one-off capital advance of two thousand five hundred. And of course, it then becomes our project. Um, you know, the expenditure might not be two fifty, it might be even less. But it, it's proven to put something in the budget, even just one pound to keep the line there.
Alison.
No, I would only say that I, I think probably a lot of community fridges put a donation box there. And people made small donations, which I think will cover those costs. And also, the other thing is, is that we wouldn't have to do things like tap testing of the fridges. So, it's only that was little. Yes. Oh, right. Yeah, not, you will divert it.
So, will, will we, um, I imagine the town council are there for funding the elective cost to.
Yes.
On page six, at the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
It is four thousand.
Yeah. I know.
Yeah, it was, which post is that for?
It's twenty-five percent of the events and market.
Right.
So, the events and markets rounder, if you remember, is fifty percent in events, twenty-five in happening in management and twenty-five percent in site.
No, it's fine. Could I ask about, on that page, about Town Hall Transformation borrowing?
Yes.
Why are we borrowing?
This, because no decision has been made on what we're going to do to get the, the, the match funding required.
Okay.
This is a nominal sum of what it would cost to borrow three hundred thousand pounds on a public works loan board over thirty years. But as I think was discussed, well, it was proven to put it in the budget to make sure that the money was there if we needed to go down that route. Because we just, we don't, we haven't got a stack yet. How are we going to get that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, on page nine, as the paper.
Yeah.
It was just a query. We've got ten thousand pounds in the budget for their eventing. Do we have one in particular in line?
We do. So, if you're a fool this year, um, we've had ten thousand in the budget, uh, sixteen thousand in the budget for play area fencing and that dollar belling.
Yeah.
Uh, next year's um fence to do is Little Ambus. Um, so there's a wooden, wooden, very rickety picket fence around the front, and there's also a very, very shonky wooden fence at the back. So, the idea, which keeps falling over, so the idea was to do the same green.
Yeah.
Um, metting, um, that we're, we're running now. So, that one's a, that one's a nice one, because it's every year we're doing an improvement to one.
Um. Further down the page, in the repair and maintenance, because this is under open spaces.
Yes.
Um, you, you remember the issue with the bomb and town?
Yes.
And, and I, I'm, I'm comfortable with why we pay these things, because it, it actually will cost us less in doing it ourselves.
Yes.
Um, because of the uh salary cost. Um, but I'm just wondering, where in all of this is that those payments? Um, purchases. So, we pay, um, so when they have the greens done.
Yes, we don't pay.
Or equipment.
We don't pay.
We get the invoices. They bill us.
Um, the agreement we have with them expired in twenty twenty-two.
Right.
So, it's coming to council for discussion in January.
Right, okay.
But, yeah, but to say seven thousand pounds in there for repairs and maintenance is basically taken from what was in this year for recreation. I haven't changed. It was, it was a move from the one code to the next. I didn't, that was being proposed by, by teams.
Because I know they are asking for more.
I know. And, and it'll be discussed by, by council in January.
Yeah.
Laura.
Laura.
Sorry, Alison.
If, can you explain the um, the difference between open spaces, uh.
Yeah.
Play and rec, um, and the play and rec further up on page seven?
Right, so pay and rec, uh, so page seven, recreation, so code one thirty.
Yeah.
Is the existing code. All of that's being moved into the individual ones which are below.
Thank you.
Um, because basically, recreation is a massive area. As you can see, everything gets lumped inside it. I thought we need to do operations, play parks, open spaces, because at the moment, we don't see what happens making enough of play parks. It always gets lumped into the one recreation.
That's really helpful. And I couldn't understand why.
I did that in my paper. I've done a big exercise on the questionnaire.
Yeah, next year it'll be better, because it won't count the current years.
I was completely confused by this, but these have got no figures for next year. These all have.
Open spaces one through three is an effect of my stray and all the other spaces.
Thank you.
Read that one. Um, and just because of a query at the Events Committee, um, four nine nine one capital works on page twelve, which would be the toilets.
Yeah, capital works.
It was, is that to put in the day, the, the shower that we have, but haven't been moving in?
So, this four nine nine one capital works is to install the sink in the changing places toilet to finally get the changing places toilet.
So.
And includes the insulation and drainage works, because we are required to put a drain in. Uh, we're not required to put a shower in, and the advice that we've had from our incoming contractors is that we don't put a shower in because of the issues with Legionella's disease, that we have to then risk assess, check temperatures.
Run the shower.
Running the shower, you know, it's that kind of, and the, and change faces don't have showers. That would be like an aspirational goal. We would meet the purchase standard by not installing the shower, just to having the bigger sink. So, that money is for the bigger sink. Um, if we could do it this year, we would do it, but there was nothing in the budget to do it, because I really want to beat thunder and dog opening there. We want to claim the title of first changing places toilet house.
It is in the budget for this street.
And I was confused by the comments made, because I'd had a conversation with the councillor involved, who'd actually come with his metal detector to try and work out where the drain was. So, he was involved in the project and understood it was going on, but I'd forgotten the money was allocated.
So, did you have your hand up, Richard?
But I'm on, yes, page, page ten. Um, again, I mean, it's got a lot of noughts there, because they'd probably be moved around from, from L C.
They are, yes.
Waste collection.
Yes.
Seven thousand pounds on vehicles for waste collection. What, what waste do we collect that require us to spend seven thousand?
The seven thousand eighty-two pounds is the cost of the tipper lease for twelve months. At, whatever it is, six hundred and something a month.
Yeah.
Um, that, that, what the waste we collect is from the bins that we have, and we have a substantial number of bins around our, our works. So, we do, we do, we do a bin run twice a week, so on Mondays and Fridays.
We have bins in Lower Paris Park.
Yeah.
Where else do we have bins?
The Burgess Lands.
Other, right, lots of them.
Yes.
Very good.
I did, it just.
It seems enormous.
It's a lot of money.
Yes, it, it, it is. And the council took out a five-year lease on a tipper earlier in the year that we're now tied into for five years. Um, in terms of bins, so there are the green dots. So, we've got a couple in Powers, Lower Powers Park, we've got um Dollar Bellin. We've got the bins in Vicarage Garden, such a hiding on this map. We've got the bins in Ice Dray, one of them seems to have been erroneously put in Oldford. Bin in Scanser's Pitch. Then we've got the bins in uh Little Ambus, Country Park, Burgess Land.
Okay.
And then for some reason, and this is why the map is so good, we have two bins over here.
In the bell.
Oh, yeah, I think I remember.
And it was some sort of historical agreement, but um if the, some of you that do know the, the inside out of this interim strategic plan will note that there is supposed to be a review of bins going on, and this will be going back to the committee in January to finalise exactly which bin locations we will be doing in future. Because for me, this is a massive operational issue, because it takes ten minutes out of the time to go to the bin, get the bin, drive back.
It would be interesting to know how much rubbish is in those bins.
In, anecdotally, the rubbish in the bins is household waste. Um, and I'm not sure we should be in the business of picking up household waste.
No, agreed.
We should be in the business of picking up litter, which people are, are quite rightly leaving in our bins, which is fine, but not household waste, because they can't afford to.
Because some of the bins certainly are in the Burgess now, they're dogwood waste.
Yes, yeah.
And also one of those ones at Bellens, uh, by the canal.
They're by the canal.
Um, should be provided by the canal and the bus trust.
I, I understand it was some historical agreement, um, two clocks ago.
Yeah.
Said it all.
Yeah.
Alison.
Um, looking at the whole bin and tipper lorry issue, is this something for real in-depth investigation, consideration next year? Because is us emptying these bins, noting the fact that we have to have a vehicle to do it, actually a value for money for the ratepayers? Is it something that actually we would be better, as there is, as there are others that collect waste? Is this something that we are doing ourselves at a considerable cost, noting that we have to have a vehicle to do it for a twice-weekly run?
Do they use a tipper truck for anything else?
Yeah, lots of others, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
So, it's a useful vehicle.
So, effectively, uh, it's distorted a bit by putting the entire cost of the tipper truck there.
Yes, because it's primary, it's primary purposes, yeah. I can, I can split the cost out into percentages, if you'd like, to move the cost around. Um, but that is what the council took on during the year for five years. Um, so we are kind of stuck with it for five years. But if the Audit Committee want to do a service review into that, then I'm sure we would welcome any input from, from elected members. Um, I think the difficulty is, of course, is that we have to collect the bins that we've got. Um, unless we get rid of bins, but as we know, that doesn't really solve the issue. Um, and of course, we used to do a lot more bins than that when we had the streets in contract, um, which I believe they were doing a bin run every day.
Oh, they were, yes.
So, I think it's a bit of a legacy hangover of that.
But that's what I mean, is almost the, when you're doing the bin run every day, it's, it may be a bad thing, but you're justifying having a tipper truck to do it. And although they do use it for other things, its main purpose is for that. That, that's why I was just asking whether it was worth looking into.
And, and to, to, to reduce the cost of the waste collection. So, that line there, four two zero zero in waste collection, um, that's the actual cost that we, that we get charged by plotters to go over the wave bridge to, to dump the waste from the bins. Um, to, to reduce that cost down, the team now only dump the waste once a week. So, we do the bin run twice a week, but we leave the bags in the tipper's until, till it's full, and then we take it as full to reduce that cost down, because we pay about sixty-three, sixty-three pounds a time we go over the wave bridge. Um.
Yeah. Um, can I just ask, um, because I was asked about it and I'd forgotten about it, um, in relation to bus shelter? Particularly the bus shelter in Gulliver Road.
Yes.
Which was knocked down, knocked down and then taken away.
Yes, I think you've been reading my desk today.
It was, I'm told it was knocked down by Anna Astolli.
Yes, it was.
And relating it to the budget, is, do we need anything to?
We really, we do need something in the budget. Um, I have had the quotes on my desk today, as you'll be pleased to know, and bus shelters are incredibly expensive. Yeah. Um, the, the quote we've got, so the one that we need for that Gulliver Road is the pavement's shorter. So, it needs to be a cantilevered type of shelter. So, it's one side with a, with a roof. Uh, the quote is for two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two pounds, which includes installation. Um, however, I believe it was hit by the lorry and was left there, but.
I remember.
Paris County Council removed it.
Yes.
And I don't think Paris County should have removed our asset without either telling us or asking our permission. So, um, I'd be, I'd be chasing them for some, some of the cost perhaps.
There's a resident in that area, they're complaining, you know, because it gets wet.
Uh, talking of bus shelters though, um, the other bus shelter that we do own on, um, all the green, um, um, unfortunately, got driven into or something happened to it and, and has not got any glass in it. So, um, there will be, we, we need a line somewhere for bus shelter repairs. Um, look, we don't really have two bus shelters, none of those gone, but we've only got actually one bus shelter. And, you know, we need to budget for the fact that it might get hit sometimes. Um, other councils do have a lot of more bus shelters, have to pay a lot more money in later.
Maybe playing against us, because.
Were you first one, Richard? I was just about.
Yeah, just, um, uh, ju- just wanted to raise a minor issue insofar as it's a much smaller amount than some of the other amounts talked about, and that is allotments. Um, I, I was interested to see that, that the income for allotment exceeded what was budgeted by, by a substantial amount. Despite the fact that I know a number of people cease to, to pay, so obviously we've had other interest. But, um, uh, looking at, on the next page, that's page seven, looking on page eight at allotment costs, I mean, nothing's been put in yet, but, um.
No, so, so it's moved from one thirty. So, you can see, we've budgeted six hundred and received eight five five.
Yeah.
But if you look at new allotments, which is one three five, one three six, which is on page ten.
Oh, right.
You'll see I've revised that budget, I've revised that budget down to some, up to seven fifty for income. I've revised the water and repairs to the right amount of searches.
Yeah.
However, today, when we're turning the water off for winter, we did, we did discover a leak in the tap at the hospital allotments, which means that we are going to have to build a very again.
Hospital, yeah, I thought, I thought there was one there, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the, the, the reason why I was once interested is that you put in, you put in seven hundred and, no, where, where have you put in the amount for expenditure?
Um, seven fifty.
Seven fifty. Um, but if we are to get the Burgess Lands allotments back uh, in the sort of condition that will attract, uh, you take us, I suspect we're going to need to spend a certain amount on, on that. And I, I would, I would say the seven fifty is probably not enough.
Well, we will look at the repairs maintenance budget and then that, that heading and see what we can get quickly to.
Uh, I, I agree with you. One of the reasons I gave up my allotment was because I literally couldn't walk on the pass. I was wondering.
Um, Ops and Development did consider last week a report on the allotments. Um, and if memory serves me right, we're currently at a seventy-something percent occupancy rate, um, a hundred percent in the hospital. But again, Burgess is the, is the, is the poorer of sight. Um, and of course, it's on a hill as well, where the water runs down, the soil runs down. Um, it wasn't the best place to put allotments, but the council did say, so it was kind of where we want.
Okay, can I move us to page sixteen, which is the tourist information?
Yep.
And I think I'd mentioned it before, it's the electricity line four oh six one. And, and now we've got solar panels, I was wondering why.
That has, that's been revised down.
That was being revised down.
Yeah, so, um, it was currently, it was previously five thousand in draft two.
Right.
Um, so it's down, being revised down.
Okay.
Um, so that has come down. But again, it's, it's not without full use, use of the solar panels, it's not knowing.
Yeah, we don't know.
The, the, not on the echo, the possibility is, but I think that's probably a good, good estimate.
Yeah.
And moving on then to, to the events budget, obviously the first page and some of the second, you know, the first page is, that is, no, because we've split it from that side into different categories, which, which is very helpful. I think.
Sorry, which page is that?
We're on page eighteen.
Page, so page eighteen isn't, isn't really relevant at the moment.
Um, I, I, just before you start, I did have a query from someone that raised that Christmas lights under the winter festival budget is distorting the winter festival budget. Um, because the lights aren't part of the festival, the lights go up regardless. Um, so I'm more than happy to move Christmas lights to its own, own, you would require, um, to then not distort the winter festival. Um, and that, that, that cost there does need to go up. Um, so we put a nominal ten thousand in the budget, however, there is the anchor point testing and the pack testing and the electrical infrastructure testing. Costs that all happen in the year, which need to go somewhere, so that is.
Uh, uh, and I would suggest that that cost needs to be a matter for the whole council, not just.
Yeah, fine. Uh, it's, it's, at the moment, it's, it's not, it's a cost of the committee, because the committee are responsible for the lights, but at the moment, it's under winter festival, but I'm more than happy to move it to. If you have.
Okay.
Sorry to cut, to cut you off.
Yeah, I've, I've always thought it should have its sort of own.
Can I suggest that with that, it's, it's also the bunting in summer or whatever in the summer.
Yeah.
Those two things, neither of them are events, are they?
No, but, um, because the committee has a responsibility for economic development and sound regeneration, so that's why bunting and events is under just the events budget.
Yeah, but should that also, like Christmas lights?
Well, yeah, well, well, what I'll do is I'll put Christmas lights, yeah, I can move bunting.
Yeah.
Just.
While you're talking about bunting.
Yes.
Is the three thousand pounds for providing new bunting?
Yes. And we're still finalising the quotes on it. I don't think it's going to be as much as three thousand, so that can come down. We've got two different quotes. We've got a quote for fifty flags and flag poles to go in the flag points around town. Or we've got a quote for new bunting. As you'll remember, this year, our bunting disintegrated on us. Um, it's partly the way it's stored, stored in barrels, um, in a very damp cellar. It's also due to UV damage. UV damage damages the nylon. And as, as also, the bunting that we had is in shorter length, so it's tied together. And it's the ties, tying together is where the weak points occur. Um, we've actually been in touch with other local councils in the area to find out where they get their bunting from. And we found a couple and they do longer lengths. We really need like a hundred metre length of bunting to fit the street. But it'll be, it's be a discussion for the committee, do they actually want to go down that route of bunting? Or would it look better putting flags, particularly marsh flags, in the town centre instead of, instead of bunting? Um, bunting, it's a, it's a, I think it's, some people would love it, some people think it's an outdated concept when it's the bit of the middle. Um, but I, I know what, it doesn't go up, people get.
Personally, I would happily do without it, but others might. No, I like it.
Yes, it's, there you go. It's a Marmite issue, um, it, it's one of those things. Uh, I'll let the committee decide what the, the way it goes on, but, um, so at the moment, we put, we put three thousand in. But I think that's slightly higher than what we'd actually look at. So that'll come down in that, that's clear for.
I do think it makes the town look festive. Whichever season. Um, okay, I've got just two more small ones. So flicks in the sticks, the income. You've started at a thousand pounds. Are we getting that at the moment?
We've currently taken five seventy, if memory serves me correctly, or five twenty. And we're halfway through the year, which would, which would indicate we should get at least a thousand. However, I did pose to the committee the question, um, which they didn't look at in my report. Um, should we be charging for flicks and sticks? Um, there is a, there is a stark difference. When you go on the Flicks and Sticks website and you look at the films going on. You look at the places and it's all four pound, three pound, now it's free. And actually, evidence suggests that people are happy paying four pound or three pound. So is that something that we should actually be budgeting to income for? As the committee was supposed to consider it in, in November, I think they did.
So we leave that in.
We'll leave that in.
If they, I think we do need to get them to.
We do need to get them.
I, I, I think the committee did discuss it and I.
Oh, from my, from my, my recording, watching the recording of the meeting, it got, the, the bonus discussion got shut down very quickly and said that the chair was going to speak to me about the budget and we moved on from the discussion.
Yes, but I, I think specifically on flicks of the sticks.
Okay.
It was suggested.
It locked down.
I think that, that, uh, there was a straw poll at the next one, um.
Okay.
On exit to see whether people would be happy to pay a modest amount.
There was also some consideration in my report as well that, um, we'd been approached by a local company that does, um, cinema filmings. Um, so cinema flicks and sticks, but maybe tailored to a different audience, something called Marshwood doesn't have cinema, as you know, no cinema vision. And actually, that's something the committee could provide with the income to go with it. Um, and if it didn't decide that, so again, it, we need to look at the whole thing about flicks and sticks. Um, I've also been in touch with Art Alive, who run Flicks and Sticks. Um, their licence with the British Film Institute is up for renewal this year. So it is likely that costs might go up. Basically, I got in touch with all suppliers and said, what prices are going up next year so we can budget for them? And they said, look, how it might go up. So that might change in draft three.
I, I think.
Yeah, well.
I, I think we could usefully talk to other providers of flicks and sticks in the area. Um, and see, you know, what they do, uh, what works, what doesn't, because, uh, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel.
No, and, and, and I'd love to see a younger audience, you know, something a little tailored for both ends, you know. Flicks and Sticks on a Monday, but on a Friday is a more showing that's tailored towards younger people and it's, you know, it's about social inclusion and all that kind of thing, so.
Okay, um, four thousand and one staff in council, we're paying a pound just every year.
Okay, I put a pound in, I'll explain why, it's because I haven't had the timesheet yet for fireworks, because it happened in November. But when I do, I'll be able to accurately work out what the cost is for the staff. So I put a pound in to remind me to put the actual figure in, in draft three.
Well, I have.
I couldn't, I didn't want to guess the figure, no.
Um, thank you. Consider yourself reminded. Um, and the only other one, I, I have raised a report, I just want to teach that, pension for the call.
Yeah.
Now.
I spoke into Powers and they are having, going through a currently an, an actuarial review, which is where they review their pension every three years to see what the actual shortfall is going to be. They're going to get back to me exactly what we need to budget.
Thank you.
Because it's such a big cost, I don't, I would require that.
Um, and it could go up as well.
It could go up and it could go down, um, but that's just what we're saying. And, you know, we're not the only one paying the shortfall, there's plenty of people.
We've been paying it for a long time.
Yeah.
And they, we haven't got many people in the pension. And, um, the response we got last time was that, um, at some point, the council itself had decided not to pay the payments. Um, which is why we have such a big shortfall that we need in November.
Right. I, I found some documentation that said we could either pay the, the shortfall in one, there was a two options and we picked the second option. And actually, I think we probably picked the first one, we would have stayed at F R M, so we did the slower one, um, which is whatever.
I, I went on some years ago onto a webinar about it. And it was exactly as you say, but some years ago. And I believe this was about two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Um, the council decided not to pay this amount. And it could have been that what they were doing in fact was illegal and they could have taken action, but they didn't. But it was, it was prior to. Uh, I know that it was prior to me coming on the council, so before October two thousand seventeen, this decision was made. And we're now mocking up the message.
Uh, but I, I, I reached out to, to the pension manager at Powers and asked, you know, what the figure is going to be. Obviously, he did tell you that, no, um, he's just got back to you actually last week and said. Um, there's a new policy or something being consulted on at the moment about employee contributions and the fund is being re-terried. With, with the pension, pension bills, um, and that he's let me know in, in nearer January.
Yeah. And, and I think it's just worth pointing out that in the events committee budget, line five one nine O, which is generally community event.
Yeah.
Um, there is three thousand two hundred and fifty pounds in that. Which is for use for whatever the events committee decides to miss.
And that's gone up with inflation, so just phenomenal increase.
From last year.
From last year.
So, so, subject to people coming along and saying, well, it's this event and we're like that amount of money. And, and as Chair of Finance, I can see no reason to change that, but. Um, but if people do come up with, but they do need to do it very quickly now. As to, well, we want that to be able to do this and that to be able to do that, we can still consider it.
Yes.
And we'll have that conversation with Cliff. And I think Sally wants you to be part of that.
That's all. Yeah, whoever, I, I think in my email I said whoever wants to, to get in touch, you know, come along and we'll, we'll, we'll flash it out and go through it line by line like you've done. But I think doing it line by line, like, has been worthwhile, so thank yous.
Anybody got any questions about that now?
Oh, the only one that I do think draws your attention to, so page twenty one. Um, civic events remembrance.
Oh, wow.
Um, of course, we just had remembrance and we spent two hundred and fifty pounds on the drummer.
And I just said, I think that was money well spent.
I, I, I would concur and, and the committee will have its own deep brief report on remembrance, um, in the coming, um, in the coming months. Um, however, we've been approached for a full band. At a cost of one thousand two hundred.
Oh, really?
So the committee will need to decide, was the drummer, is the drummer valued for money or is the full band valued for money? Um, we've asked, um, R B L if they would contribute to it, but they said no, because it's a civic event, which is fine. Um, but I was under the impression that some of the veterans may fundraise to short, fill the shortfall, so I think it's a conversation with the committee to have. Um, I don't have a pressure to send a discussion to the committee, but that's the cost that we've been quoted from Wrexham for the, for a full band. But actually, the drummer was particularly well, um, I thought the remembrance parade was fantastic, so.
Could I ask, would that band still do remembrance and the mayor's civic?
Probably, probably that's a one off for the one event.
Yes, but what I, I mean is, would they do it? Not that that's the cost. Yes, because our difficulty's been, you know, yes, yes, there's a ban there, but it can't come on the day you need it.
But now you know what the cost would be.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, the drummer was good, um, but I, the, the veterans are quite keen on, on having a band. We haven't had a band for quite a long time. Um, I, I think, uh, uh. The consensus amongst them, the ones that I spoke to anyway, was that, yes, they would, they would like, um.
Can, can I suggest that we include that cost in the budget?
Yeah.
Um. And should, it needs to go back to committee, but should, um, should they decide, yes, they want to do that, I mean, and.
Could I add to that suggestion that we look at it for both events?
Yes.
We put it, if it's in the budget for both events, just.
Well, I can add it to civic and hospitality, which is where the mayor's bit part of that, which is fine.
Especially white back, I don't.
Okay, so we're noting this, aren't we?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're noting, well, you're doing what council asks you to, well, council asks you to make some savings and you've added the students, but that's funny. The budget is pretty pared back to the previous years. Um, I've tried my best to pare it back as best as I can. Um, while keeping an eye on the fact that we have some incredibly old buildings that need work done to them. Um, in terms of, you know, staffing changes, there's already going to be, um, potentially fifteen thousand pound saving. In the staffing structure, there's already a ten thousand pound saving cleaning, so there's already, this big savings built into the budget. However, expenditure has also gone up. Um. By, you know, a disarray because of the, the shortfalls and things, but also income has also gone up as well. Um, and the last time I checked, um, actually, um, income had gone up by eight thousand pounds, which is a massive increase for us. Um, which is helping to ke- keep down that precept. Uh, now we've now got the council tax base. Um, I can give you a band D figure, but I'm reluctant to do so yet, because you don't know what I, I want. But, um, the report I present in January will be very comprehensive, showing exactly what band will pay what. Um, I think in the past, you haven't been given the full information on precept elements, so, um, I will, I'm determined to make it better for you.
So, Phil.
I'm only waiting, I, we've never had a band for the, for the mayor's parade, have we?
No.
Never.
No. I kind of worked it out last year.
I don't think, I don't think we need it. I don't think we need one. Simple as that.
We don't, we don't need a band for the mayor's parade, um.
Well, can we put it to full councils, so they think, because I.
Yeah, um, this, this, my discussion in full council, but I'm, I'm proposing that full council look at, um, some sort of civic and ceremony or working group. Because there's some elements of the council in terms of civic, that probably need a reexamination. Um, in terms of, you know, robes and chains and all that type of thing, um. So hopefully that'd be something that that group could consider. But we'll wait and see what the discussion turns at council.
Can I just give one other comment? The band that we had for the, for the parade, recent parade, but. I hope somebody have a word with him about the speed he takes off down the street, because I'm sorry, he absolutely knackered me. And quite on her seat, and, uh, the, the mayor had about a fifty yard gap. Uh, in front of me, he got to the church gate, uh, door before, over fifty yards before I did.
Had he been there, Phil?
He was going like a train.
And that is why.
He was better coming back, I must admit.
That's why I mentioned to the, the parade marshal on the way back, we go slightly slower because, um, we were getting a bit late behind at the back.
It was three inches, I've been walking still.
And actually, the veterans commented on the speed of, uh, prior to the, not prior to the event, and when they're in the chamber. As part of the discussion was, uh, the event goes too fast, but because obviously they're getting older now as well.
It speeds up and it, it tends to speed up as it's going up the hill.
Absolutely. But if, was there a vehicle involved?
No, 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 no.
Because the excuse before was, oh, well, we've got to, we've got to make the vehicle go faster up the hill because it's an old vehicle and. No, but yes, we agree.
Well, I, I, I was, that was very kind of you, Phil, because I know really it was me holding you up and you would, you know, you would have just carried on ahead.
You were a great helper, partner. You were a great helper. I needed the help as well.
Okay, um, so we've done that, we don't need to vote on it. And we'll move on to.
Oh, um, sorry. If anyone, sorry, Dave, I think Dave has hand up.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
My green, I'm sorry, babe, I was covering you with the budget.
If we've got fed up and gone.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry, just struggling, struggling with my, uh, with my Zoom. Now, this, I had a hand up a long, long, a long time ago, I'm afraid I might have forgotten what it was about.
Well, I apologize, Richard had got things on the screen, so it meant we couldn't see it.
Cover the dream for the Sebastian.
The, the chair will be, will be pleased to know that we are investing an additional screen for the chair. Um, so the chair can see, whoever's chairing can see, um, the full Zoom experience, not having to rely on officers to tell you when, when to, when to see who's put that on.
That's good to hear. Thank you, thank you.
Did what, did you have a question, Dave?
No, um, I think it, it was very much incidental, I've, based around a discussion that's, that, that's been concluded now, so I won't drag us back. Uh, back, all the way back then, so, but please do feel free to, it was not, uh, significant to me.
I do apologize for that. Okay, we'll move on to other matters. So the first one is the complaints culture policy. And the town clerk has sent us the One Voice Wales model complaints policy. And you're fed up of me saying these things, but, um, managing complaints was one of my specialisms for, I don't know, twenty years of working. And while there's nothing technically wrong with the complaints policy. Um, uh, in reading it, I felt it made of rod for our own backs. It's very, um, pushing, filling in a form. Um, and I think we can do a lot better. So with your permission, I'd actually like to defer this to the next meeting. Um, and I can work with the clerk on making suggestions, which I have made, but we've only just had the policy. Um, as to how we can make it more efficient. Um, the shocking thing for me is, I think that's the part, um, well, what, now, how many complaints do we have? What are the statistics on complaints? And we have no system for recording them. Um, or, or comments or compliments. Um, so I think there's a slightly bigger piece of work to do before we approve that. We, we've got a current complaints policy, so this is just adopting a new one. Um, but from my background in business efficiency and customer service, complaints are definitely, I love them. Because you can learn from complaints and improve what you do as a result of them. Um, so to me, they've always been really important. And I, I did, and I, I will do a bit of running. In the twenty years I worked at Reiki, where complaints came under, I didn't manage them all, but I, I wrote the policy, did the training. Did the customer service training. Um, we only had four complaints that got as far as the housing ombudsman in twenty years, and none of those were upheld. Because we sorted it out before it, it got too wrong. Um. So with, with your permission, I'm going to, um, add. Um, so with with your permission, I'm going to, um, add. Got no way now.
But I defer.
Defer to the next meeting, is everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Do we need a vote?
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh, so I'm proposing it, so would someone second that? Thank you, Alison, all those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Hands up. Everyone, yeah. So that moves us on to the Freedom of Information Publications Scheme, which is appendix I.
Joe, Joe.
Sorry?
Joe.
Is that on the next page? Yes, yeah.
I don't really think there's much to comment, we're required to have this, um, under the Freedom of Information Act two thousand, we don't currently have one. Um, it is the model that the I C O publish, um, it sets out what, what information is available in their publication scheme. Um, and, you know, where where things are held, and that's pretty much all we're required to have.
Richard, do we get any F O I requests?
Yes.
Yes.
I've had three in the seven months I've been here.
Okay.
Um, and one subject.
Two is a move from the same, there is.
Two are from the same, so, one is still outstanding to be done, um, this week, um, and we've had one subject access request, um, so we do, we do get them.
Can I ask a question, do we charge?
Uh, no, we can't.
No, we don't charge.
Um, subject access, that's actually correct.
Yeah, uh, so where someone is, um, where.
No, we know what it is, do we charge for that?
Well, no, we're not permitted to, under the Day Scratch Act. G D P R made it through.
It, it says it. So, um, Phil.
Uh, if, if, uh, South Office, happy with the, um, uh, the the documents here, I, I mentioned the process that the adopted.
There is, in terms of charging, just to say, so, um, where a request exceeds, um, eighteen hours, um, the council can refuse it or they can pay, um.
Yeah.
So, but that usually gets refused, um, because it's based on, um, so the I C O set each year at at our, an hourly cost. So four hundred and fifty pounds is the cost, uh, which is twenty five pounds an hour, eighteen hours, that's where it comes from. However, um, you'll see on the back of the page that we do charge fifty p for positive blocking, um, and that's in line with the fees and charges that you agreed.
Yeah.
That's, um, that's.
I just wonder whether we should have an annual report on how many F O I requests we.
And so as part of the council's annual report, that will be now included in there, along with complaints, F O Is, all of that type of stuff will all be included in the council annual report.
Okay.
If they're doing a separate one, it will be looked into the other one, um, I just haven't had my, I haven't had twelve months to get my teeth onto it yet, but so I'm eager to do it when we roll around.
Lots of info.
A lot of info brackets, um, I want to put things in there like, you know, number of decisions held by council, number of meetings, attendance for cancers, we've got all that data now from the systems. Just need to get it out there and tell you what we do. Yeah, Phil.
Wouldn't it be better to just send it to council, whole council, and let council have a good debate on it and and agree it or otherwise? We're, we're, we're going to duplicate everything we do, I can see coming.
What's that?
Council will pick and choose it, it's the same as we will, if you know.
People choose what?
It's, it's, it's an authorized document by an authorized body.
This Freedom of Information.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can, we can.
All you're doing, all you're doing tonight is recommending adoption to council.
Yes.
Because you can't, you haven't got power to to do it.
Yeah, you're not. So we've had a proposal and a secondary, so all those in favour?
Who proposed that?
Could I have a recorded vote, maybe, Sharon?
Yes.
Why?
Who proposed it?
Alison proposed it.
Oh, I proposed it.
Oh, sorry.
Nice second date, yes.
Alison's second.
Record it, okay, so, uh, Morath?
Four.
Uh, Alison, four. Uh, Bill?
Four.
Richard Church?
Four.
Phil Pritchard?
I've seen.
Uh, Stal?
That's staying to.
Uh, Phil Owen? In favour. Uh, Dave?
Believe it or not, in favour.
And Carol?
Four.
Yeah. So, so what you've just decided is to, to recommend adoption.
Recommend yes.
Um, so we'll move on to six point three, which is festive closure period. Richard, do you?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I don't know what to say about this one, I believe that each year you consider when things are going to be closed, um, over the festive period. Oh, that's fine, I I'll suggest to you, so, um, at the moment, we are. Need to work out what, Christmas issues are weird, um, it's on a, um, it's on a Thursday. So we are, it's, so at the moment, we're proposing that the last day for the market open is the twenty third of, um, December, which is the Tuesday, so not opening on the Christmas Eve. Because it's Wednesday, it's not market day anyway, um, the twenty fifth, of course, is, is Christmas and the twenty sixth is bank holiday. Um, and then we are proposing that the T I C closes, um, I think on the twentieth of September, which is the Saturday. So staff, oh no, T I C is open until Christmas Eve, half day Christmas Eve, then staff are taking, half day Christmas Eve. Staff, I I've set the two statutory days as the twenty ninth and thirtieth of December, so staff are having to take, um, annual leave on the thirty first, because it's not a bank holiday. And the second of January, and we were returning back to work on the fifth of January, if you're happy with that. Um, because of, because the the first day is bank holiday. So we're returning.
Staff are going to take annual.
So staff are taking, some staff, some staff are taking different leave, because, so schools break up on the nineteenth, so some staff are 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 finishing then for Christmas. However, the T I Cs are only open until half day on twenty fourth. And then the office itself, I'm proposing, will probably be, I'll probably do a few days that week, um, might be twenty second, twenty third, um, but we're back on the fifth.
Back on the fifth, what about Meals on Wheels?
Meals on Wheels, they are proposing to deliver on Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
And I believe even Christmas Day and whatever they usually do.
I think they don't get the food from the Am Holloway Centre, they combine with the commu- with the, uh, New Street Church.
Yeah, basically, Meals on Wheels is operating over the period, is what, is what we're starting.
Phil?
Yeah, I I was just wondering whether we, we consulted with the market traders over the, uh, opening hours over Christmas. I know that if our staff aren't working, then we can't keep the market open, but, um.
Yes.
They, they, they would obviously, some of them, I suspect, want to keep trading right up to the last minute, but.
Yes, so we, we've, we've spoken to them, there was a traders meeting, um, this week actually, um, they're doing some late night openings as well in December.
Okay.
Um, and they were happy with the fact that they weren't going to open on Christmas Eve, because it was a, was a non-market day anyway. If it was a Tuesday, we would open, but it's a Wednesday, so we weren't expecting that. So they were happy with what we proposed, and then I think the operations team are going to be, uh, you know, their, their legal will work around that, so they'll be working.
Um, so can I just ask, um, obviously, staff will need to take two days annual leave, should they, um, want to hold it on.
Yeah.
What if staff don't want to take their, I know most of them do, but I know last year we discussed if staff choose not to use their annual leave over Christmas.
Yeah.
And last year, we can find them something to do.
Yeah, um, unfortunately this year, all staff are happy to use annual leave and have already booked it on, but, um, if they weren't, then the T I C, they can work it on their own in the office or we move from home, I've got no issue with however they do it, um.
Yeah, I have a question with that.
Yeah, however, however that looks at them, some, it's fine, yeah.
Uh, one, two.
So, Beth, Phil?
Uh, Christmas Day is on the Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah.
I believe the whole, all organisations can finish on Cr- on Christmas Eve. And on the Thursday, Friday of that week, of the statutory days, and on the following week off in gratitude for the work they've done in the last few years, because they've had a rough time. Our staff have had a hell of a rough time, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it is nothing happening in that week between Christmas and New Year, nothing happened, it's a dead week, and it, people are situated in the office and nobody called in, and the T I C last year was exactly that.
The only thing I can say to that is that we, we physically, I physically can't set the statutory day on a bank holiday. So I can't, I can't set the statutory day for the bank holiday, because the bank holiday takes precedence.
Yeah.
I've set the statutory day as the twenty ninth and thirtieth, so if to do your proposal, you just have to give additional leave on the thirty first and second of January, it's up to the committee.
Yeah, okay, no.
It's up to the committee.
You want to be, I tell you something, that week costs us more money than it's worth.
At the moment.
We don't do anything, there's no work to do in it.
So Alison, I.
And I think we should treat our staff.
Your recommendation.
I, I don't have a recommendation.
Well, to, that they have what you've just described to us, so that half day, they, they, everything closes at half day on the twenty fourth. And there are two statutory days that are the following week and they return to work, um, on the fifth.
Using two days annual?
Yeah, yes.
But I think Phil's made a proposal.
Yes.
Sorry?
I think you've made a proposal to give them additional days.
Give them, give them the, the two days, how, how the week, start back in January, the first of July.
It's been.
Yeah, okay, um, so, Richard, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't agree with that, because there are many people who are expected to work over Christmas. And I, I don't think it sets a good, good example for public services to be giving additional time off to their staff. And I think there are things for them to do, people working in offices will find work to do, things that often are not able to do if they're being constantly interrupted by offices being open. Um, and I, I think we should proceed in the way the town park can do it.
Yeah.
Tony Townshend have done it for the last ten years, Sharon.
We will take a vote, my view is that not all of our staff would be able to do that anyway, so the ops team will still be on call.
Yeah, so, um, um, they've, they've worked out who's going to be on call, I believe it's Phil Asher that's drawn the short straw this year. Um, or, and I think next year he's not doing it, um, they've, they've worked out the route, basically, because Christmas always falls in the same week. Um, it's always the person on call in the third week, which I think is always Phil, so next year they've juggled it, so it'll be every, it'll be one in in four. Um, he will be coming in to, to just check the buildings are not leaking and things like that, it'll just be essential work, um, of that.
Okay, so Phil has made a proposal.
Yeah.
Which is to give them the whole week off.
Yeah, so it's to give them additional days on the thirtieth of January and the second, uh, thirty first of December and the second of January.
So just to be clear, they get the bank holidays on the days that the bank holidays are on.
Yeah.
They then have the weekend, then they have two statutory days, which most people don't get. Um, and do you propose that should give them another two days, um, and then return to work on the fifth? Estella has seconded that, um, all those in.
Can I have a recorded vote, please, Sharon?
You can.
Of course. Morath?
Um, I'm against that, I'm sorry, guys, but they're well paid and they have a good leave and title.
Uh, um, Hazard?
Against.
Uh, Bill?
Four.
Uh, Richard?
Against.
Uh, Phil?
Four.
Uh, Stal?
Four.
Uh, Phil Owen?
I, I'm in two minds, but, uh, you know, four, I, I.
Um, Dave?
Yes, I, I am convinced, and and our, our staff who, you know, for whom it's appropriate, I feel, uh, do deserve recognition, so, yeah, I'm going to go for.
And Carol?
Against.
One, two, one, three, four, five, four, one, two, three, four against, so that's carry, but again, if you have got the powers to actually enact it, that will now go to full council for a final decision.
What, what was the voting?
It was, it was five, four and four against.
So that recommendation will go to full council, yes. Okay.
I will, one, I will, I will clarify that with all of the different teams and I'll send an email to everyone about when the different buildings will be open and services, for example, we'll just give you that now.
Okay, date of next meeting, to note that the next meeting of Finance and Governance Committee will be held on the twenty first of January.
Yeah, so.
Twenty twenty six.
Yeah, so the schedule that actually went out in, in May was, had a, had a meeting for the tenth of December, and full council on the seventeenth. However, both our, the Chair and Vice Chair of Full Council can't do the seventeenth, so we've agreed to move that to the tenth. Um, and it just, it'll be a, a shortish meeting and hopefully, um, we'll have some festive nibbles as well after it, um, to celebrate Christmas all together as a council.
What time will that meet?
It'll be at six thirty.
On the tenth.
On the tenth, um, it'll just be, um, payable policies and not much controversial stuff, but a budget, again, will, will feature, at, at any, any urge of work that needs to be done.
Okay, to intimate, to resolve if required, that members of the public and press would request to leave the meeting by reason of the confidential nature and the business about to be transacted.
I would propose those.
Thank you, Bill, second it, thank you, Phil, all those in favour?
Hands up.
Hands up.
Thank you.